Seeing that it's 5:30, I'll call the meeting of August 16th to order. The reason that it's called the August 16th meeting is that's what today is. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand if you're able.
The Pledge of Allegiance reads as follows. In the United States of America, and to the God of our lives, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Are there any announcements? Okay. Are there any suggested additions to the planned meeting? Any other items suggested?
No.
No.
Okay, then we're ready to move right along. And public comments. If you have something to tell us, now is the time to do it. As long as it pertains to something that's not on the agenda. We'll talk about everything on the agenda as we go through that. But people are welcome to offer their comments. You have about five minutes to talk if you like. Does anyone have any suggestions for any comments to make? Don't all raise your hands at once. Okay, continuing right along. Presentations, public hearings, and we're going to see a sketch plan for the planned Stevenson Road property, including a new Lutheran church that's proposed on that site.
So HRG and the Emmanuel Lutheran Church submitted a sketch plan. The parcel is at the corner of Stevenson Road and North Atherton Street. And as you are aware, sketch plans are a voluntary process that we allow here at Patton Township, so anything that is said tonight is non-binding, but it's a first glance for you to put eyes on the plan. The only comment that the Planning Commission had moving forward was that they would like to see the access entrance drive as far away from Atherton Street as it could be. So we have representatives from Emmanuel Lutheran Church tonight and from HRG.
My name is Steve Ford. I'm part of the leadership team of Emmanuel Lutheran Church. Here with us this evening is Steve Kirch from HRG engineers, and then also our caster, Pastor Logan Wilman. So wanted to give you a little bit of background about the church and what we're looking to do. There was some information that may have been shared with you in advance, I'm not sure, but just want to highlight some key things. First off, thank you for the opportunity to present this sketch plan to the township supervisors. We feel like it's a good opportunity to share with you our plans for the future and to also get any feedback that you may have. A little bit of background about Emmanuel. The church was formed in late 2015, and we've been blessed to be able to worship using space at Albright Bethune United Methodist Church in State College since that time. As our church has grown, we've been looking for opportunities to have our own building and property so that we, you know, we have complete access to that. In November 2022, the Stevenson Road property was listed for sale. And a couple in our church saw that property, felt like it might be a good match for us, and actually took a step of faith and went ahead and purchased the property. Knowing that the difficulty of purchasing property, getting approval from the church would take some time, and since property is in such tight supply, they felt that this was an appropriate step to take and were grateful to them for what they did. They intended to sell the property to the church if the church determined that it was suitable for use for our congregation. So the property is basically located at the corner of North Atherton Street and Stevenson Road. You can certainly see I-99 probably 30, 40, 50 feet above the land there. It's, as you probably know, just down the road from Home Depot near the Waddle Road exit off of I-99. The property is 10 acres in size, and it's a little hard to see on this drawing. We have another one that we'll show later that shows an intermittent creek that runs through the property. We've seen it dry, we've seen water flowing through it depending on the time of the year and what's happening that way. In order for the church to make any kind of decision on the property, we felt we needed to do a feasibility study, and as a result, we retained the services of HRG to do that feasibility study to investigate, are there any things that would be a hindrance to us to be able to develop the property? And so they did a number of things in taking a look at that. The criteria that we gave them was we would like to be able to have a church with space for 150 people in the sanctuary, and then potentially longer term, looking at the idea of maybe like an after-school daycare, preschool, somewhere down the road for up to 50 students. So those were the criteria that they used in performing their feasibility study. The conclusion of the study was that the site is suitable for construction of a church and possible future day school and daycare and preschool. And I just want to highlight a few things from that study. From a zoning standpoint, the property is zoned A1 rural, but it's also within the I-99 overlay district, so that affects, you know, what we could potentially do on the property. The zoning setbacks are generally 75 feet from the property line, and then for the creek, it's either 100 feet or 50 feet depending on whether there are plantings adjacent to that creek. We did also ask HRG to look closely at utilities because that's certainly a concern that we have. There is no public water on the property. The closest public water is in the Ridgemont neighborhood, and we did contact the Borough Water Authority about the ability to connect to them. It's about 2,000 feet away from the property. The individual I spoke to at the Borough Water Authority said it would be very expensive. He, you know, just in a quick phone conversation, guesstimated $750,000 because the water line would run along North Atherton Street and all the PennDOT permitting and issues related to that would make that process very expensive. So at this point, our expectation is that we'll be installing a private well on the property. We've spoken to one or two well drillers. It can be done, there can be some challenging conditions in that area, but, you know, we feel comfortable that we'll be able to do that. From the standpoint of sewers, there are no public sewers in that area either. There was a, there were perk tests done on the property by one of the previous property owners in 2022, and they found several locations on the property that would be suitable for a drain field as a result of those perk tests. The same time, earlier this year, the couple that purchased the property received a letter from the University Area Joint Authority talking about that they are considering the possibility of running a sewer line along the creek bed running back Stevenson Road. I think there is a concern to increased capacity from Meeks Lane, Gray's Woods area. I'm not sure exactly what they're servicing, but one of the options that they were considering was this sewer line along the creek bed. If that were to happen, the church would certainly be interested in being able to connect to that, but when we spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, Amy indicated that that's a very challenging process because it's not in the regional growth boundary, so that creates many challenges in order to connect to it. So we understand that. I think we're going in with the expectation that we'll have to put in a septic system, but if there was a way and we could get the necessary approvals from the center region and the townships, I think Amy, you said it was, you had to get five out of six townships to approve that, we would certainly consider that, and we'll work with the engineers and just determine what's going on. But at this point, I don't think we're aware of if any decision has been made by UAJA in terms of running that line. As far as electric and telecom, power lines do cut across the property. Our expectation is that we'll have to relocate those power lines probably more to run parallel to Atherton Street and then along Stevenson Road unless West Penn has some different ideas on that. So we realize that. From the standpoint of road access, road access would be from Stevenson Road. Our property line along Stevenson Road is about 900 feet, and we'll show you, we have a few concept sketches that we'll share with you, and the location of the driveways on to the property in those concept sketches is a little bit different, and as was mentioned, that was, seemed to be the main comment about locating the access into the property further back from North Atherton Street. Based on HRG's traffic evaluation and the amount of traffic that we would expect from our property would primarily be on a Sunday morning, but, you know, different activities during the week. But HRG believes that what we would require from PennDOT, because it is a Penn, Stevenson Road is a PennDOT road, we would need a low-volume driveway permit when we get to that point. We did ask HRG also to perform a wetland survey. Because of the creek running through the property, we wanted to make sure that there were no issues there. HRG did the survey on June 12th, and there were no regulated wetlands found on the property. One of the other things that we did, the property, and some of you may know a little bit more about this, but when I-99 was being built, the front portion of the property was used by PennDOT. We don't know if it was for stormwater management, if it was for a lay-down area on the property, but if you look at the historical aerial photos, particularly late 90s, early 2000s, it's obvious that there were things done there. And one of our concerns was whether there was debris and other things on that front portion of the property that would affect our ability to dig and do anything there. So HRG made arrangements to have test pits dug on the property. We had 13 test pits dug across the entire property. We did not find any impacts from the PennDOT work there nor any major issues on the rest of the property, so that geotechnical evaluation indicated that the site is considered suitable for construction of a church. So at this point, I want to talk about a couple of the concept plans that HRG developed. There are basically two plans. It's probably a little bit difficult to see here, but basically this is what we call sketch number one. The church, potential church property in this plan would be here, parking here, potential septic drain field here, here, or here, and then stormwater management there. The distance from this driveway out to the intersection with North Atherton Street, it is probably a little bit over 600 feet. And then the other sketch plan that we have really just moves the building and parking lot closer to the front of the property. So here would be the building, here would be the parking lot, and roughly 300-plus feet from the intersection to that driveway location. I mean, these are truly sketch plans, and we have a lot of work to do to define, you know, what we think the church would be and, you know, where potential driveway locations would be, and we understand the interest in keeping that driveway further back from Atherton Street. Potentially even, you know, we may look at having two driveways, you know, perhaps an in and an out, or two driveways to split the traffic up on the property. Steve, if you have anything else to mention as far as that? Okay. The other thing, this shows a little bit better where the, this creek bed is, and so that affects our ability, you know, where we can build on the property. Like I said earlier, there are times when that creek bed is dry and times when there's water flowing through it. Okay. So in terms of Emmanuel Lutheran Church's plans for the property, we did purchase the property in June. We are really early in the stages of development. Our plan is to retain the services of an architect and a land development engineer like HRG to further develop concepts and plans for the property. We don't expect any construction to occur before 2025. It could even be into 2026. Our members would love to have it sooner, but it depends on plans, permits, approvals, and finances. So, but that's kind of the timeframe that we're looking at. Near term, we intend to install a sign on the property that basically just says, "Future Home of Emmanuel Lutheran Church." And I spoke to Nicole Harder some weeks ago about, you know, what limitations we have in terms of putting up a sign, and I have a pretty good understanding of that. The other thing, we may contact PennDOT about a, I'll call it a temporary driveway permit, although I know that's not the exact correct name, that will allow us to put some access to the property that would allow us to mow and clear some brush. We've done a little bit of that already, but something that would give us a little bit easier access to the property. So that is pretty much it as far as the property. We thank you on behalf of Emmanuel Lutheran Church for the opportunity to present this sketch plan and be glad to answer any questions or comments that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Dan?
I'm just curious. I have no, no issues with your sketch plan and your proposal, but on your sketch one and sketch two, there's this 50 or so little white oblongs. What do those represent?
Those are the topo, for the topo map, one of the drawings. I think you'll see, I forget what it is, 1500 or something like that. Those are the topo lines for the, for the site. The little, they're white?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Little rectangles.
Let's see here.
Okay.
Can we go back to the?
Yeah, I didn't know what they represent. That's why I asked.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so these are all just the topo elevations for the property. The map, which you may or may not be able to see well, does have topo lines on it, and that's just indicating the topo elevation.
Yeah, I'm familiar with topographic lines.
Sure.
These aren't lines, they were just, I guess, boxes with numbers in them which you can't read at this level.
It's hard on that, yes.
Any other questions?
Question? I just have a question on the creek. You're saying sometimes it's dry and sometimes, you know, has it ever been a time that it's overflowing onto, close to the church area?
We're not aware of that.
Okay.
The slope on the property is such that when, I'll call it the east side of the property, it's unlikely, I mean, it would have to, I think, be 20 feet or something like that. I'd have to look at the topo. Steve, you know, comments that you have?
Just any design that we would do for a site would accommodate. We would study that and make sure that the elevations are well below the building elevations.
Okay.
The property is a little flatter on the far side of the creek, which wouldn't affect the area where we would be looking to build, but yeah, I think there's enough slope there that that's not an issue.
Okay.
It would have to be a lot of water. And let's hope, we had two inches of rain at home the other day, and I didn't get out to see where the water was with that storm that blew through, but I don't think that's going to be a concern.
Okay.
And that's 35 million gallons of water per square mile on that, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one, I have a couple of questions if nobody else here does. One is, when my wife and I moved out to that part of the township 25 years ago, one of the reasons we didn't build on that side of Atherton was the frustrating situation that people coming out on Stevenson Road have turning on to Atherton Street. I'm just wondering if this might require something like a temporary traffic light or an intermittent one, like they have at some plants, or some other thing to avoid that, because we don't want, we don't want that situation to get any worse. It's tolerable now, I guess, but if you go past there at rush hour or you see traffic backed up there, and they can't really get out because traffic's coming from both sides.
HRG did do an evaluation of the traffic there, and I think that's from the PennDOT data that's available. I think the most recent data on North Atherton Street in that area was about 9,000 vehicles per day. On Stevenson Road, I think it was just over 2,000 vehicles per day. Based on your assessment of number of people and vehicles going into the church on a Sunday morning, we'd probably be looking at 50 to maybe 75 vehicles at most, and that would be during, you know, low traffic volume. If we got to the point of the after-school care, still we're looking at fairly limited. So in terms of increasing the volume of traffic, it wouldn't be significant. I know, you know, from the standpoint of our members, that that has been a concern, particularly turning, you know, going from Stevenson Road out to Atherton. The other option, and some of our members live more towards the Bellefonte area, would be going down Stevenson Road to Buffalo Run, but it is a, it is a question, and it's something that we ask HRG to take a look at and provide, you know, I think you have some transportation folks that took a look at that.
Yeah, any future planning, we will have to include PennDOT, so once we have more detail, I'm sure PennDOT is going to be giving their input on that intersection.
I asked a question, not as, not as a way of arguing about whether this is suitable. In fact, it sounds like a great idea. I just think that we need to be alert for the possibility of traffic problems that we can alleviate some, in some manner, and think about whether we need to do that. A second question is, some of the properties on that side of Atherton Street had problems with water quality because of pyrite getting involved. I don't know if, I know the Matternville School, they couldn't use the water there, and was any water testing done for quality? I know that you tested for the septic.
We had some information on some adjacent property wells that were built, and there was no pyrite issues. There was some treatment that was required, but nothing significant.
Okay.
None of the geotech testing, the digging, not to test the depth of a well, but nothing came out there either. So, so far we haven't come across anything that would be significant there.
Yeah, the geotech field engineer that was on site, one of the things he was looking for in all these test pits, and the test pits were dug to about 10 feet, was in particular to see that fill from PennDOT, if there was any pyrite in there, and they did not identify anything there, which was good.
Fantastic.
Mr. Chair, I think we should go ahead and forward this to the Planning Commission.
I like the idea. Can we move to do that, or?
Actually, it's been to the Planning Commission, and it just came to you to get comments, and then it'll go back with the church to decide how they want to move forward. So there's no formal process or motion needed.
Yes, sketch plan, but we can just move on.
I don't see any reason why you shouldn't proceed to the next step.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Good luck to you.
Yeah, I've just been looking at your website this whole time, so I'm just coming from 2015 to, what, eight years now?
2023.
Yeah, getting the building, so congrats on all that.
Yeah, it's a big step, and we're pleased to have the property. And, you know, when we have plans and we have the finances to take the next step, we're excited to move ahead with that, so thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to present this.
Good luck.
Okay. I guess we're up to public safety, is that right?
Yes.
Public safety. And we now turn to the chief of public safety.
Your evening, everyone. It's nice to be back here. I know Sergeant Shafanku did a fantastic job presenting our report last month when I was away on vacation, but it's great to be back with you. I'm here with the July public safety report. Copy was included in your agenda packet. You'll notice that our officers conducted 144 traffic stops. We wrote 44 traffic citations, three parking tickets, and handled 19 criminal arrests. Bike patrol logged 36 miles, did 78 business checks, handled two incidents, one vacation home check, and one of our officers participated in a bike rodeo as well. Under department notes, some of the cases and incidents that we dealt with in the month of July, we had a 37-year-old male who was arrested for attempted solicitation of prostitution. The male who works as a probation officer in Love County actually was messaging a female here in Patton Township, trying to set up a meeting where money female here in Patton Township, trying to set up a meeting where money was to be exchanged for sex. A 38-year-old female was arrested for unlawful use of a vehicle. The female used a vehicle without the consent of the owner and was involved in a motor vehicle accident. A 31-year-old female was arrested for disorderly conduct. A female was found naked along a roadway in the township. The female admitted to consuming narcotics, was transported to the hospital for treatment. Three arrests were made for retail theft, seven for minors law, and two arrests were made for driving under the influence. Our officers served one warrant of the three that they attempted, and busy month for vacation home checks, we conducted 32 vacation home checks in the month of July. Our officers did use force during one incident in July. Our officers dispatched a report of a woman walking along the street without any clothes on. They found a woman and placed her in a blanket. She appeared to be under the influence of narcotics. As officers were assessing her well-being, she told the officers that she was going to take a walk and began to run from the officers. The officers escorted the woman to the ground, where she did comply when they asked her to put her hands behind her back to be handcuffed. She was evaluated by EMS and transported to the hospital for treatment. No injuries were reported, though as a result of our use of force. Under community relations, Officer Tuskovich drove one of our patrol vehicles in the Fourth of July parade for Fourth Fest. He also spoke with the Jersey Mike's corporate managers from all across, pretty much the state and I think the tri-state area, about emergency action planning for all kinds of different situations that might come up. The owner of Jersey Mike's actually reached out to me and mentioned that they had an incident where a vehicle, person hit the gas, knocked the brake right in front of one of their stores, came crashing in through the windows of the storefront. So just, kind of, he wanted us to just walk his staff through, you know, kind of thinking about what might be, might happen, and have some, some idea of what you might do if any type of these situations might occur. So Officer Tuskovich did a fantastic job, and he also provided some run height training for them as well. Officer Sunderland installed a child seat for a township resident. At the last minute, we were contacted by Special Olympics. We all know that with the poor air quality, they had to cancel the large event. However, they did hold a tennis tournament at the Circleville Park Tennis Courts, so Officer Tuskovich did participate in the opening ceremonies for that a few weeks ago. And then it was Sergeant Chapenko who participated in a bike rodeo for a group of Cub Scouts, also out at Circleville Park. For training department activities, our officers attended tactical response team training. A handful of officers attended their biemal emergency vehicle operations course. Our officers attended firearms training at Fisherman's Paradise, and Officer Kaufman attended advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement, or A-Ride, as we refer to it, training. And the goal of A-Ride training is to provide police officers, training on how to observe, identify, and articulate signs of impaired impairment related to any drugs, alcohol, or a combination of both. And the goal, obviously, is to reduce any injuries, fatalities, from traffic incidents. Officer Tuskovich, our school resource officer, attended the Pennsylvania School Resource Officers Conference, and Sergeant Chapenko attended a solo officer rapid deployment training trainer class, so he's an instructor for our agency. We have a couple of officers trained on that regard, and that would be for any type of critical incident, be it an active shooter in a school setting, or any, any, any business, or any, any location. I also attended EVOC training and also the Happy Valley Business Association meeting. A few notes. Officer Tuskovich received a note from a group that he presented to, a group of kids, showing them, just talking about police and law enforcement, and showed them in the car. They had a fantastic time. We have a photo of our vehicle. It's very singled out there, but that is the Fourth Fest parade, so that is Officer Tuskovich participating in the Fourth of July parade. You can't really see anything in the background, just our car, so. Lastly, I have our calls for service. The month of July, month of July, we responded to 413 calls. That's up from the 356 that we handled in June. Of the 413 calls, 52 were traffic-related, and 51 were EMS assists, or helping out with our ambulance service. Lastly, I just want to remind residents, I'm going to put some information on our website. On Monday, school starts back up, so next Tuesday, August 22, State College Area School District will be back in session. So I just want to remind particularly motorists just to be extra, extra vigilant around the schools when you're driving, looking for pedestrians, particularly school-aged children, who'll be walking from the Park Forest area up to our schools, and also bicyclists. A lot of kids do ride their bikes, especially this first part of the year and the end of the year when it's nice out, so making sure. Our crossing guards do a fantastic job. They make sure that when they approach the crossing, they get off their bikes and they walk across. So also to obey our crossing guards, they do a really great job for us. They have a tough job, but we really appreciate the assistance they provide and making sure everybody's crossing safely. And then lastly, just the speed limits in the schools. So our school zones, they're posted, the times that it's posted, but people need to realize that it is 15 miles per hour during drop-offs and pickup. So just to be really cognizant of that and to make sure that they're paying attention in the school zones. So that is all I have.
And I just want to mention one thing that debuted today on the township's YouTube channel. We now have Patton Township Police pointers, so the first episode is out today. Officer Tuskovich did that with Sophie, and it's a really neat way to educate residents about some pointers for dealing with various things. I think this one's on.
Car break-ins.
Car, car break-ins, yep.
Correct, yes, yep.
It's just on our website.
It's on our YouTube channel, and you can access it from our social medias as well, social media accounts.
It's on the website as well.
Yes.
Does anyone else have a comment, question, or concern?
Yeah, cool.
At our Rotary Club, we had a, a talk from the director of the Center of Life Link, and he went out of his way to talk about the excellent work of the area police departments, including Patton especially, in getting to people before the ambulance can. And that was just great hearing that.
I appreciate that. And you mentioning the Rotary jogged my memory as well, so our safety fair is going to be September 30th, and the Rotary typically does participate and have a, have a table there. So September 30th, it's a Saturday, it's an away game. We are hard at work planning that with the Happy Valley Business Association, but it's shaping up to, it looks like just as big of an attendance and, you know, as many things there for the kids to do, so we're really excited about that and hoping for good weather, so.
Chief, what's the time?
It starts at 10:00 a.m. and lasts until 3:00 p.m. It's at the parking lot between Target and Kohl's on Colony Boulevard, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you for the report. And that brings us to public works operations, and there are no items there. That doesn't mean that the public works department isn't doing anything, it's just that there are no items to report right now. Engineering, planning, and zoning. Planning Commission.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We met on the planning commission on Monday, August 7, and the first item we discussed was the item that you just heard about, which was the church's sketch plan. And we didn't have too many comments on that. We sort of felt the same way that you all felt on that. And then the second item that we discussed was something that you asked us to discuss, I believe, two months ago, which was the rezoning from R2 to R3 that you got asked as a request for the 160 West Clearview Avenue property. So I just want to, we had public comments on, on that, and I don't have the exact number of residents who spoke, but I would say, I don't teach math, but I would say fairly that it was, you know, 15-ish people who spoke, and I think, to summarize their statements, they were all opposed to the rezoning. So after hearing their statements, and their thoughts, you know, they've posted the meeting on CNET, but I think the two core themes, quote unquote, that kept coming up in their statements was the traffic and that moving to an R3 zoning could cause, and the second theme that came up was some of the water-drained situations that occur. Having said all of that, we, as a planning commission, had some members who were ready to proceed to vote, and we had other members who were not ready to vote, so we decided to delay our vote on this till the September meeting. So it will be back on our planning commission agenda at the September meeting. You know, we will obviously hear any more comments from the public, and we will have, you know, any more discussion. And I think the other reason is some of our planning commission members wanted some time to formulate some questions based on the comments that they heard at the meeting. So that's pretty much all we discussed. I will be glad to answer any questions on anything that I went over.
Amy, you had an idea about that neighborhood too, didn't you?
Yeah, so one of the things we're going to discuss, this is new for Rich, but Leslie and I discussed it with Nicole. We think because Waddle Road is really a neighborhood, and I use that term for the entire length of the road, in transition, that it might be good to do what's called a small area plan, where we would actually engage the residents of that area, the residents in Oakwood and Bolton and Clearview, and also the other properties along there, and have them talk about what they would like to see that corridor become. You know, we sort of, at the planning commission level, got stuck talking a lot about micro issues that'll be handled at the plan review, but it really brought up that fact that Waddle Road is really sort of in transition. There's the R3, there's the commercial pieces, the office piece, there's what's going on with I-99 and the Toftrees West piece. So wouldn't it be good to bring, because I don't, I think this is going to continue to happen as some of these houses are sold, you know, if they're sold to commercial entities. So wouldn't it be good to bring the residents together, have them work, right? We want the residents to be empowered to talk about what they want to see in their area, and then bring that back to the planning commission and the supervisors for further discussion, and do a little bit of long-range planning in that area. And then it gives people more control over where they live, right? They're not beholden to a zoning code or something that they didn't have any say in, in what was happening. So it was just a thought process that we had talked about here. It's been done. Hafman Township did one, Harris Township's done one, Ferguson Township's did one for Pine Grove Mills, which is a similar sort of in-transition type of neighborhood. So just looking long-term what we'd like to do. So it's something we'll talk a little more about with the planning commission in September.
Good idea. Gotcha.
It is a great idea. So in the reading that I've done on affordable housing, and there's resistance to it nationwide, and it's the NIMBY not in my backyard. People don't like change, they don't like big things coming in their backyard. But one of the more successful approaches to affordable housing, in particular attainable housing, is to do, what you have just said, it wasn't called that per se, but to essentially focus on values that people want to see in their neighborhood, walkability, some open space, not so much on calling it affordable housing or attainable housing, or talking about zoning, but just getting this cohesive sense of community. And then, gosh, this, this planning will address all of those, and that addition will address all of those. So I think it's, it's a great, I'm, I'm excited. Thank you.
Anyone else? I think calling it workforce housing has a better connotation than affordable housing.
Well, it's been, it's been called a number of things, and no matter what it's called, the, the reputation seems to evolve with the change of the names, so. We have to see that free evolve, maybe. That's what history has shown.
Okay, so we have some ideas for proceeding, and thank you excessively for the report.
Yeah, sure, sure. And I also failed to mention, which I should, is we heard before we had this discussion, a very in-depth overview and analysis that the staff put together. Leslie went over it, and the staff explained it very thoroughly of the history of that, which for myself, that have not been here for 65 years, since the radio station was first at that property, was very informative to me of everything. So that was how we started the discussion, which I think helped and will help going forward because of all the background knowledge that we have.
Anyone else on this? Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Now we're up to a discussion about the Cricklewood Drive Bicycle Pedestrian Facilities and the consultant's proposal, or proposed solution of what we're going to do.
Yeah, so we, the township retained Bucart Horn in November of 2022, as the board knows, to work on the Cricklewood Drive Bicycle Pedestrian Alternatives Analysis. The scope of the project included a study of the current conditions of the corridor, data collection and the gathering of public opinion through meetings and surveys. And the goal was to propose three alternative designs and determine one preferred design that could be implemented to improve connectivity and safety in that area, because that's a pretty heavily-traveled corridor. The RAC had meetings, they held meetings with the RAC, Patton Township staff, and the public, and the RAC made a recommendation to the board, which you acted on at your April 26 meeting, which you adopted alternative four, which was a road diet with a shared-use path. So Bucart Horn has submitted a proposal to do the full engineering design for this project. Their design fee total is $93,990. We had budgeted $103,500 for the preliminary design services in this year's capital improvement fund. We spent $50,000 of that, so we have some money left over to start the project. We'll include the bulk of that money in the budget for next year and also in the CIP. So this is just to move forward with the engineering design proposal. This, you know, construction certainly would come after, and Susan and I, Susan Wheeler and I have also discussed, you know, we'll start identifying funding sources for construction after we're done with our full engineering.
Okay. So are we ready to vote on this one?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve the engineering design that we've just apprised of.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I mean, at first glance, this tells me I need to get into engineering. $93,000 to design something.
It's not too late, Suton.
All right.
Hello? Hello, am I audible?
Oh, I think we have someone who would like to give some public comment.
Yeah, hi, hello. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little new to Zoom. I'm still getting used to this. We haven't really used the software before that much, but I've, I've been a resident of Park Forest, so my name's Fedor, but some of you may know me as Ted. I've been a resident of Park Forest Village for seven years. I'd like to thank the township for continuing to approve bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure and faculties in the township, and I'm really proud of my tax dollars going to such use. I'm sorry I couldn't be here in person, but thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Welcome to Zoom. Did great.
Anyone else before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Which brings us to the next item, the capital improvement plan.
Actually, the mid-year financial consideration.
It does not bring us to that at all. It brings us to the mid-year, to the mid-year finance, everything that's fiscally possible.
That's, that's, we don't want to miss out on the mid-year.
Of course not.
Report. So every, every.
Cue the elevator music.
All right. Every year, we do, every, at the end of every half-year, on the June 30th, I do a. I do a, a review of the first six months revenues and expenditures and compare them to the budget that we submit at the end of last year for two thousand and twenty-three. So I've done that review. I take the numbers, just to give you an idea of what I do, I take the numbers for the six months ended June thirtieth. I look at the history of how much real estate taxes do we traditionally receive in the first six months of the year. I estimate what I expected to be the number at the end of the year, and then when I'm finished with that, I compare that to the, to the year, the annual budget, and I make a determination, are we going to come in at budget, over budget, under budget? Our goal was always kind of, we budget pretty well. We come in a little bit over budget on the revenues and a little bit under budget on the expenditures, gives us a little bit of cushion to work with. And in my review this year, it looks like our revenues are currently running at about three percent over budget, and our expenditures are running at about two percent under budget. Our revenues, the real estate taxes are tracking about three percent over the budget, plus a little bit of something we didn't budget for was the hundred and eighty thousand dollars now we received from the state for the Georgetown sinkhole. On the expenditure side, our salaries and benefits are coming in below budgets in some departments. It's, you know, not having certain positions covered for a full year, though they were budgeted for the full year. For instance, the assistant road superintendent position was budgeted, but it's, it's currently unfulfilled, fulfilled. So that is the reason why we are coming in. With that, I will take any questions that anybody might have on, on this report, and I want to thank Dan for, for his comments he had given me outside the meeting, and I'll take as a consideration for next year.
Any questions, worries, fears, consternation, or comments?
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Which now brings us to the sinkhole.
Uh, no.
No, it doesn't either.
Capital Improvement Plan.
The board, CIP.
That's C, right?
B.
B.
Seven B.
B. I'm only two ahead of them. Go ahead.
So we're going to start at a staff level, working on our next five-year capital improvement plan. As you know, that's where we kind of capture the long-term projects and things that we're working on. And the board has historically always had input into that process. We put this on tonight really as an introductory. Certainly, we gave you a digital copy. It's an eighty-four-page-long document, but we gave you a digital copy of it. We can provide you a printed copy if you need one. We can certainly discuss this again at one of our meetings in September. We just want to get an idea if there are some projects that you would like us to be working on and including in that capital improvement plan. And in October, I think October timeframe, we'll come back with a plan, draft plan for you to look at.
Generally, you know, as, if you remember in the past, we'll, we'll bring it up this meeting, the two meetings in September, the second meeting in September basically will be the meeting where you'll have to tell me if you want something in there, because then in that October meeting, and I think it might even be the first meeting in October, I present the, the draft of the CIP.
And for any residents that are watching this exciting meeting, if you have any ideas to give us or suggestions, feel free to do so, because that's how we get some ideas.
Yeah, feel free to, to email them to us at patent@pwe dot patent dot P A dot L S.
Dan?
Just a question. Are, will, will staff be proposing any new positions, important new employees, new positions?
I do not believe so.
No, we'll be proposing that we fill the engineering position.
Yes.
Yeah.
That, it's, it's an existing.
To fill a vacant ship.
Yeah.
Anything new?
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't foresee us, but we will let you know when, if that changes.
Yeah, and one of the things we do want to do next year, I've talked to Ken about this, is I would like to do a strategic plan for our Public Works Department that looks at staffing, that looks at our maintenance facilities, that looks at our infrastructure, that looks at our fleet, that looks at the things that are changing, because the township is a growing, dynamic community, and that is changing the needs that we have. So, but I want to do a plan first so that then we sort of know the roadmap of where we're going, as it were. Yeah, that's a bad pun.
So Larry, I think we talked earlier this year or last year about the understanding that we're going to have to raise taxes here at some point?
Well, at, at some point, we, we may have to raise taxes. That's what the CPA will tell, the CIP will tell us, okay? With what, you know, what decisions are being made in COG are going to affect that. What decisions we make in the CIP are going to affect that. But, you know, we get a certain amount of organic growth within the township, new, new construction, those items that are, will organically grow our real estate tax base, which is forty-seven percent of our, our revenue. And also you get organic growth in earning of tax and LSD tax. If our expenditures exceed that organic growth, then we have to look at what services we offer are, are, are tax increase. And I don't think anybody, you know, tax increase is always our last, our, our, our last resort. So that's what the CIP is going to tell us. And if I can't work out, if Amy and I can't work out a way to continue with the services that the board wants to continue with, in addition, all the items we want on the CIP without a tax increase, then we want to come and ask for it that way.
For sure. And I love the idea of, you know, actually, you know, creating a roadmap to figure out where we're going. You know, what keeps coming to my mind is just like restraint, especially fiscally. I definitely want to make sure that our people are taken care of. I want to make sure that we're modernizing, we're staying dynamic, you know, to the needs of the community. And I, I also, you know, thinking about the COG too, I would just like to set an example of like, we were able to show fiscal, do what we need to do, show fiscal restraint. And that doesn't mean let's go up to the boundary before we adapt.
Right. I don't think you mean by fiscal restraint that you want to decrease the police department by, by ten or fifteen percent.
Yeah, not that.
I mean, that, that's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is making sure that, you know, we're paying, we have the services that we need to have at the best possible cost.
Yeah, we want to provide cost-effective, high-quality services.
Exactly. And so, yeah, just making sure that when we're advocating to, to the COG to slow your roll, that we can show that we're, we're modeling that.
I think that I can more than vote, more than vote for enough at the COGS finance committee meetings that they need to slow their roll. Yeah, both, both of us. Yeah, we're, we work in tandem in that. Yeah, I'll, I'll be adding some verbal comments to the finance committee report at the end of our agenda.
Any other comments on the CIP?
I just have a question. I like to be prepared. Larry, you're extraordinary, and I don't think no one can fill your shoes. But do we have anyone, you know, that you're training to follow up? You're talking about your partner in crime, Dan. I know you two tag-team, you know, COG, but we're getting ready to lose Dan.
Yeah.
And I'm like, okay, the tag-team team is getting ready to be.
Sure.
You know, in transition to training.
Right.
To us.
So the reason why for the facilities and for the SPPA and for finance, that I continue to attend every one of those meetings is, does I, because I think they really need the continuity. And so I'm always going to be there to, to back up. I started years ago with Walt Weiss, and we've gone through different people on the finance committee, through George, through, through Dan. I, I, I think Dan, Dan is.
Yes.
I, I brought him along at the beginning of his tenure on the finance committee, just to let him know the history of what was going on. And Dan is very fiscally conservative, so I, with me and him can, can agree on a lot of things. I think it's up to the board, who wants to be on the finance committee the next time.
Looking.
And I certainly will spend as much time as needed, and Dan will attest to this, I will spend as much time as needed to bring that person up to speed so they understand exactly what, what's going on.
I just don't want to burn you out.
Oh, no.
With, with everything. I like backup. It's like A, B.
You can only burn me out if you throw me over on public safety.
Wait a minute, I'm on public safety.
Five D X is, is going to keep me excited for all day.
Okay.
He does get very excited, Ken.
I just want to make sure, you know, we, we, as we're moving forward, the A B plan, you're looking at B.
Yep.
But, you know, what happens to A? If anything happens to A, B is not going to function.
I don't think there is a person on the board that I could not work with on the finance committee.
Okay, well.
And work in tandem with them. And, you know, everybody, it, it's something that I've been doing for a number of years, finance, so it's easy for you to pick up on it.
You, you heard, you heard that.
I can, I can bring people along.
Okay, we're, we're looking toward this, you know, I'm speaking.
I thought the meetings, that's like eight AM or nine AM in the morning.
Whoever decides that the first meeting of two thousand and twenty-four could be on the finance committee.
Well, we just wanted to thank you.
I will spend some time with.
Okay, we, we want to thank you. And Dan, I can't begin to thank you over and over again.
Dan has been.
Yes.
An asset on that, that committee for us. Definitely has been an asset.
Well, thank you.
Everyone's.
Saved us last year during the budget. Without a doubt, saved us.
Everyone's keeping us on track.
He's keeping us on track, not throwing us in the curves.
Where'd you get that from?
It's a long story. Okay, now we're finally up to an item that I haven't even mentioned yet that's being next.
No, we're not.
But this is P M L.
So as you all know, P M L is holding its annual municipal leadership summit in Bethlehem from October fifth to October eighth. P M L requests that each member organization appoints a delegate and an alternate. The delegate will vote at the resolutions committee meeting on October sixth at one PM, and at the annual business meeting on October seventh at nine AM. Last year, Supervisor Rob and Larry were your delegate and your alternate in two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah, but last year it wasn't a casino.
I might be in the casino.
I might be busy playing.
How can I go this year?
I, I could certainly be the, the alternate if you elected me.
That would be great. I'll be there, but.
Dan, where, where, where'd you go? Dan, where'd you going?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay. Elliot said he's going, so.
Yes, and I'd like to. You'd like to go?
Who, was I supposed to have told you earlier?
I don't know what happened prior to me getting here, so we'll figure it out tomorrow with Luana.
Yeah, I, I, I think I was there.
We voted Luana while.
We got rooms and everything.
And the bulk room, so we can double check with Luana.
Okay.
Yeah, because she, she had us give her who was going to go so we could get a discount on the hotel.
Okay, I'll see if I can't judge. And I wasn't certain of my schedule because of family things up and.
But we can check.
But I can go, I'd like to go. So I don't mind being the rep to that unless you want to be.
No, you can.
Okay, you did, I.
I would like to go, but.
Yeah.
Elliot said he's going, so he can be the.
You wanted to be the.
The boat.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Elliot would be the delegate?
But I'm not going to fight over it, so I just plan to go.
And then Betsy, you want to be the alternate?
Sure. You're going to be the delegate, didn't you? Okay, gotcha.
And they got me down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Luana would want me to?
I will take care of that tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, appreciate it.
Now I'm getting a sinking feeling.
Again.
A new, a new sinkhole was opened up today on, on campus, and we're going to talk now about the Georgetown Sinkhole and the distribution of money that has been going on.
Yeah, I think we're finally at the point where we're able to start distributing funds now that we've clarified some things that weren't clarified before. As you remember, we got the one hundred and eighty thousand dollars in funding to assist the residents that were displaced after the Christmas sinkhole. In, at the May meeting, the board voted twenty-five thousand dollars to units four thirty-eight, four forty, four forty-two, four sixty-two, four sixty-four, and four sixty-six, and eight thousand to unit four fifty-eight, and then you were holding twenty-two thousand in reserve for future expenditures. So in the ensuing months, we've talked a lot with Betsy about the agreement and some of the things that we needed to work out. Betsy's been fantastic. We also reached out to D C D to confirm the process we needed to follow internally so that we're paying out the funds in accordance with the grant agreement. We also asked residents, we sent out one more plea to them to get, get us some updated numbers. So based on that, we saw that the expenses, some of the expenses are coming in lower, and I talked with another resident a couple days ago who said his expenses are all coming in lower. But the expenses for unit four fifty-eight, which you only approved for eight thousand back in May, are actually more like twenty-two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. So we just thought maybe you want to consider changing that allocation from eight thousand to eighteen thousand, or somewhere in that range, and then leaving the twelve thousand in reserve that we can talk about for additional future expenditures. I think it's cleaner if we do bring this back to you as we have expenditures gathered. That way we're paying. And we've had some of the residents who've reached out and said, oh, no, I, I didn't really have expenditures, use that for someone else, which I thought was very kind, so.
Anyone want to make a motion about this?
Can I make a statement?
Well, Pam, you wanted to make a statement, right? No, 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 make a statement first.
No, do the, do the motion first.
Okay. Does anyone have a motion?
I, I'll move.
That we change it to eighteen thousand?
Yeah, second.
But. No, did you want to say something?
Is there a second?
It was Pam's second.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted, never mind.
Can I comment first before you get to?
Sure.
How did this number go from eight thousand to almost twenty-two thousand dollars now?
I have a feeling back when we sent out the first solicitation to the residents, it was late April, early May, and I think a lot of folks didn't have their contractors yet. They didn't have the amount of, their estimates kind of worked up for what they were doing. So that's why some of these refining are a lot lower, the foundation repairs, than we originally thought they were going to be, because they've actually had the work done now. I think there was some economy of scale out there as well. I think some of them worked together to hire, and they got three quotes and all that kind of good purchasing stuff.
Do you have a comment, Pam?
After we vote.
After we vote? After we vote? Okay. Any other comments before we vote?
Yeah, and, and so people are sending, again, a, a, a cost, not cost estimate, but invoice whatever, all the specific charges, and they're following.
Yeah, so what they're going to have to do, I actually have a stack of the agreement page that I'll have Elliot sign. They have to sign an agreement with us that basically says they're going to provide copies of their invoices and their receipts, and also a canceled check or a credit card statement that backs up the expense because we're going to get audited by the state, so we have to have that documentation. And Teresa Sparassino at Delta has advised that's what we need before we can pay out funds. So everyone will have to sign back this, send back the signed agreement with their expenses accounted for, and then we can start, and once we have all that, we can start paying folks out.
All right, y'all better not be putting in no hot toes or something, I swear.
Yeah. I'm just saying. I've been seeing so much stuff in the news right now that people are scamming.
Sure that there isn't an invoice drawn.
I just know.
We will review for the, yes.
Yeah, I just want to review it if you got any concerns.
They'll be very frank about it if it's for hot toes.
Good one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
No.
Before we go, go forward. How feasible is it to get an estimate for, that we can put on our website of what insurance for this kind of thing costs the homeowner so that we can let people know? Because we've been encouraging people to think about this, and since this is an area that has sinkholes, if people knew what.
Yeah, I, I, I can see if I can get some estimates, but I think it might
It changes.
vary by.
Oh, I'm sure.
So, so it really, you know, we do have a list of insurance companies on our website that insure for sinkholes, and that, that's as far as we have because depending on the property, the, the insurance is going to be, going to vary depending on the property.
Might be worthwhile to share the insurance information, again, especially in light of today's activity on campus.
Pam?
Thank you. I didn't get a chance to talk to Amy on this, but before we distribute, and I, I need to talk to Betsy, any check, is it possible that we can do a press conference? Since we got, we did a press conference to do the grant funding. We need to do a press conference to show that this township followed up
Yeah.
with their word to distribute and to help these displaced residents. I know it's almost another year, but at least we were a township of our word that we're moving forward, we're making sure that each of these displaced residents are getting support and help.
Yeah, we can do that for sure.
Yeah, I would like to extend that to Representative Conklin since he made the initial push to get the 180,000.
Are you willing to be the star on TV?
I'm, no, I'm willing to stand with this board who made it possible because it, it's not an I. It's never been an I. It's been a we. And until we all stand together on this issue, you know, education, educating our public about sinkholes and where to go and where to get help, we've all got to stand together on this. So as we move forward, I'm working on, and Suton just passed on, meeting with the other municipalities to do a sinkhole roundtable. And we're taking the first step to do this, so thank you, Suton. So if, if you don't mind, and again, thank you, Betsy. Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Amy, because I know you, you got put in the position to follow up on all this, and as we're moving forward to make sure all these residents get the help. So thank you all.
But I do mean, I think Pam, you really took the lead on it early on, so I think that's very important, even though we're all part of it now.
So, Suton, go.
Yeah, no, quickly, I, I, the integrity by the residents who receive some, will, will be receiving some of these funds, and again, the integrity of saying, you know, I don't actually need as much as I anticipated, and so can we give this to the others who may need this? Very grateful, grateful to y'all.
Any, any more on this?
Um, as far as I know, right, sinkholes are pretty common to the geology of the area. It, uh, it seems to be due to the limestone, uh, rock formations or whatever, like, uh, like, and, uh, the, the rainwater percolates very slowly into the groundwater, right? So whenever it gets dry, uh, the little underground caves there that store the groundwater, they get a little bit unstable, and, and then a bunch of water starts coming in, and you get some deformations happening now and then, you know? That's at least what I, I read in like one Ferguson Township geology report, I believe. They were, they were studying one sinkhole where, um, that baseball site was, um, near Science Park, but, uh, yeah.
Thank you.
It's taught about, it's taught about in all of the geology classes. Okay, so.
What was that?
It's taught about, it's, it's a, it's an important subject in geology classes when they talk about the, the local area.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so.
No, I, that is something I would support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that looks like it's unanimous.
By the way, where did we vote? No, where did we vote it?
Yeah, I was like, you voted twice, but that's fine. Twice is nice.
We're not even in Chicago, and we voted twice. I guess we're up to eight consent agenda. Is that right?
Yeah.
I would like to pull an item from there. So I would like to pull the purchase of the leaf truck collection system. And I, I talked to E J. I know he, he knows you. So this is just my, my MO going, going forward to, and I, I called around and looked around on websites to see if there's, on the near future, a, such a device that rather than having a diesel engine, has a, uh, a C N G or R N G, renewable natural gas. I did check with Pam Adams, or the first one I went to, and I figured you would know too, Ken, if we did a C N G engine, were there any pumps in this area we could use? Right now, we can use the one over at the transfer station. That's the renewable natural gas. So I get it that it, there might not be one on the market, so I did, I just called around, you know, just because I didn't want to pull it if I couldn't get some feedback from people somewhere. I talked to A M H, the D O, the O D B, which is actually from my home state, Virginia. I tried a nice chat with them, and it's, you know, it's, again, it's about starting a conversation. So what I would like to, first of all, I wanted to also get input from you on the life expectancy of the one that we have right now. I'm assuming that if we're ordering it now, it probably won't come in for another year. Can we live along for yet another year, that type of thing, so.
It's part of the reason that we, we're looking at ordering a unit now because the unit that we have, they quit manufacturing repair parts or replacement parts for the unit that's on the truck.
Oh.
We actually bought parts off of eBay to keep that unit running.
Okay.
So with that in mind, we want to have one that we can depend on, and we know we can get repair parts readily available.
Okay.
Because without those two trucks, years ago, when we, before we had one-man leaf loaders, whenever fall came, it was not fun in Patent Township because we collect the largest volume of leaves in the region.
Ah, okay.
So maybe a suggestion, Betsy, as we're looking to do this roadmap for sort of our Public Works Department over the next year, is we can look at, and I think they're very valid questions that you're asking, and they're important questions, but we can look at, long term, can we start converting our fleet over to more natural gas, renewable natural gas, E V type vehicles? And, and kind of make that a, a moving part because we do need to have a pump available to us as well to, with the natural gas.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, so.
Or there may be an electric vehicle.
Right, by that, by that time.
So, though, is it, so I, so I get it, if we're buying parts off eBay, that that's important. How long, if we put an order in tomorrow, how long would it take to get the new one?
It's probably, if we have it ordered now, it's not going to be available until sometime in 2024.
Right.
And the issue, the bigger issue at the moment is the chassis. That's what we're chasing is the actual chassis because.
Oh, the chassis, yeah.
O D B has six chassis at the moment, and they're slated to be provided to whoever purchases them first.
Okay.
They don't know if they're going to be getting any more chassis available to them until, you know, next year, some point in time.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's very similar to what we had done. The single axle chassis that was ordered in December of 2021 has not been slated to run down the assembly line yet. We have, we were lucky enough, there was a municipality on the eastern end of the state that ordered a truck. It came in and it was, you know, had an increase of about 8% in cost. They didn't think that it was feasible for them to purchase it. We were able to purchase that chassis. That's why you'll see a red truck around your house with a Patent Township sticker on the side. And we were able to purchase that so we could put that into the fleet because we would have, we had a truck that we were not really using except in an emergency situation because of the concern for the amount of repairs we were going to incur for the value we were going to get out of that vehicle. So that's the issue we're up against right now. I mean, that, like I said, that chassis to date is not programmed in the electronic system of Peterbilt to be constructed yet, and it was ordered December of 21.
That's not the one you're talking about now for the leaf?
No, no, that, the O D B has six chassis available to them right now.
So, uh, so do we do work primarily through O D B? Is that, have you?
We actually, we can't purchase directly from O D B. We have to purchase from one of the distributors.
Right.
We work with Stevenson Equipment, yes, and we go through the CoStar's plan.
Yeah, yeah, and she was explaining that, and E, and E J also, so now I'm going to.
Yeah, he's with A M H Equipment.
Okay, and so I didn't, you know, I hope you don't think I'm going behind your back, but for me, because I, when he said he knows you guys, I thought, oh, my God, Joe's called you. But, but my job is to teach my, educate myself, everyone's out there. There was an article in the, well, New York Times this Sunday that said, basically, you know, we predicted we'd be at X, Y, and Z right now, and we are X, Y, Z plus in terms of what we're, what we, what the country is producing, the companies within the company, and a lot of it because of the investment money that's been kind of available from the, um, the.
Foundation action.
Thank you.
Good pleasure.
Uh, the I R A, yeah, exactly. I just, I will do the R first. Thank you, Larry.
I knew it.
So I just wanted to make sure that there's not someone else out there, other than O D B, who is also working the leaf loaders. And, but then I also see that O D B is one of the top manufacturers of leaf collections. Okay. So, um, I guess I'm okay reluctantly, as is my want with anything. Okay, but I understand that it's about having the conversation, so thank, thank you for allowing me that. So what do we do now? Do we just pretend like it's back in the consent agenda?
Yeah, you could put it back in the consent agenda if you're okay with it.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Unless anybody else.
Is it okay with you to put it back in?
Well, if we don't put it back in, then we just vote on it separately, right?
Right.
Actually, let's do that, just for the record. We'll vote on it separately. Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, got you, got you. Thank you for the procedure tips. So I'll move that we accept the, uh, the consent agenda with item B1 pulled.
Okay, it's been moved that we accept the consent agenda except for the item about the leaf truck. We're going to do that separately. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Okay. Do you have a comment?
No.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's done. Now let's do the other one.
I move we, uh, purchase the leaf truck collection system as listed in the agenda for $262,590.80.
Second. Okay, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay, and only because it's a, what's that called?
You'd rather have, you'd rather have us order more spongy ones?
I get it, right, but I just want to go on the record basis. But not at you guys' age. We got to work faster, okay? Thank you for all the information. Thank you for all the work on that, Ken.
Just out of curiosity, is trick or treat night on the 31st?
Trick or treat night is on the 31st, yes. The rain date is November 1st.
Okay, and now we come to a very important point of the meeting, the manager's report.
So I just have a couple of things to report on tonight. First of all, we had our liquid fuels audit done, and the liquid fuels auditor did not find any findings. It has to go still through his boss in Harrisburg, and then we'll get an official report and letter from him, from them. I wanted to open up a discussion on us providing zoning services to Half Moon Township. I was thinking if you're amenable, we could discuss this perhaps at one of our September meetings. I'd like to invite the current zoning officer, Nicole, to come. Ken was also the zoning officer in Half Moon when this started back in 2015, but there's some concerns we'd like to share and discuss with you. That agreement actually ends at the end of this year, so this is an opportune moment to have this conversation. So if you're okay with that?
Yeah.
That's a great idea, yeah.
Do we have to wait now, or can we hear some concerns?
Um, I could, yeah, I can certainly introduce some of the concerns now. Nicole's been out there. How long were you out there before Nicole?
Started in 2014, I believe, and started providing zoning services for Half Moon.
Okay, and Nicole goes out, what, once or twice a week usually?
Mm-hmm.
And she does the zoning permits, and, you know, just like she does here, she's the zoning officer. The key important piece about being a zoning officer is that you work independently of the elected officials because you administer the zoning ordinance. Like, I cannot override the zoning ordinance. Nicole administers the zoning ordinance. She has run into some issues out there where she has, that some of her decisions appealed to the elected officials, which is not the right route to go when you're appealing a zoning decision. It should go through a zoning hearing board. There've been some other things that have happened out there as well. So while I think we're happy to help our neighbors, it's becoming sort of an untenable situation for Nicole to the point that she was concerned that a resident was going to come to a meeting to disparage her, so I turned on the meeting that night and watched it to make sure that nothing was said. You know, and it, I mean, again, we're always happy to help a neighbor, but right now it's not a very neighborly relationship, so that's kind of what we wanted to discuss.
And there's a good summary in the, in the fair details, which you probably didn't get a chance to.
Yeah.
Is it, should we invite someone from Half Moon to talk to us?
It's certainly up to the Board of Supervisors if you would like me to do that. I'm not quite sure the reception that we would get.
I would say they should be informed
Yes.
that it's on our agenda and that we're going to hear from Nicole. That it's on our agenda and that we're going to hear from Nicole about issues that she's faced in trying to, to enforce or implement, uh, zoning ordinances.
Okay, sounds good. I will send a note to them.
And curiosity why they're not, why reportedly the protocols were like how this is to be, sort of like mitigated, is not being followed, that it's going to the elected officials, I suppose, to the zoning board?
I, yeah, that I can't speak to. I don't know why that's happening. I don't think that was Ken's experience when he was the zoning officer.
I think it's the residents are going to elected officials. It's not, I don't know that they're being directed to them. I think they're going on their own to the elected officials, and at that point, the elected officials should point them back to the process, uh, so that.
But they're not doing that.
They're just directed back to the zoning hearing board for review.
Since we're discussing, I, I, I would like to have a, certainly a lot more thorough discussion in the September meeting when it's on our agenda, since this is not on our agenda for tonight.
Yep.
So we won't take any action tonight. But, uh, my, my personal view is, um, the, the hiring of a zoning officer is a responsibility of the host township. So Half Moon Township has a responsibility to, to hire their own zoning officer. I don't think I was on the board when the agreement was made to share our zoning officer, who was Ken at the time, with them, uh, but it's not our responsibility to fix their problems.
Correct.
So, um, my personal view is, is I, I would suggest that we just terminate the agreement and just turn it right back to, in their lap. It's their problem, not our problem, and we don't need, we don't need to expose our employee to any kind of adverse worker environment that's not in our own township.
Question? Oh, sorry. Are we, are they paying her anything?
We, per the agreement, we get paid, and we, it was adjusted with the inflation at the beginning of January.
They reimburse us.
Yeah, they reimburse us.
For our costs. We're not making anything.
Right.
There's no profit.
Okay.
So it's salary plus benefits?
Yes.
Okay.
The, my question is, since we have our solicitor here, can we, can we move forward on Dan's suggestion? Thank you. Sorry about that, Jesse.
I literally just centered the agreement.
I'm sorry for putting you on the spot, Bud.
That's not a question that relates to the issue itself. It relates to the open records, uh, open meetings law, and, and really, this is not a decision that you've advertised to make.
Right.
It's not on your agenda to make, so I think Dan's, at Dan's comment at the outset is the right one, which is it's not a decision in front of you for tonight. I will, I will say, since I have the history probably here with Ken on this, that it is not unusual for these kinds of arrangements to occur. In fact, I, at one point, I believe Spring Township and Benner Township had a similar relationship sharing, so it is not unusual to share these services, and I think at the time, I, I know Ken initially did a lot, some work, but it wasn't a lot of work. And I think as they grow and they mature and they have changes in leadership and changes in their elected body, you know, just speaking from experience, the level of work can ebb and flow based upon those changes. So it's not unusual to have it, um, but I think it's probably appropriate to put it on an agenda. You may have residents who may or may not also own property in Half Moon Township who might have an interest, so just put it on your agenda. And again, I don't think you have to send them a letter, but you let them know it's on the agenda, given some other things only that I've read in the public, in the media. My guess is they probably will not care or they're unaware. I, I will just also add that the experience, although I've not had a chance to talk to Amy, I know you asked me to look at the agreement, I will do that and talk with Amy before the meeting, but the experience where you have board members who do not understand process under the MPC is not unusual. Uh, it, you know, there is this, and I am actually the solicitor for the zoning hearing board, but I have done nothing since Ken has not been zoning officer, so I'll just say that. They had one hearing, I think, you and I dealt with, before COVID.
Yeah.
Let me say it that way.
It's been a while ago.
Everything's relative, right? It's before COVID or after COVID. But it is not unusual for elected officials to not understand the process, and given their staffing issues, it also means that their staff is not empowered to, in many ways, guide them as your staff does regularly through the process. So there's probably a lot of stories back there in the background, but it's, it's definitely, it's affecting Nicole's work, it probably makes sense, but again, got to wait till you put it on the agenda and say you're going to act.
Okay.
Appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'll put that on your September, your first meeting in September, and I'll ask Nicole to come as well, and I'll send a note to our friends in Half Moon so they're aware of it as well.
Okay.
Um, next, uh, we had our first meeting on the single-use plastics. We're looking at, uh, regulation of plastic straws and single-use plastic bags. One of the conversation pieces that we had, and it's the Borough, Ferguson College, and Patton that are working on this, was we need to involve the stakeholders, and the stakeholders being the business community, especially the downtown business community, small businesses, Penn State University, um, Center County Recycling and Refuse Authority. So Jasmine at the Borough, Jasmine Fields is amazing, and she's setting the meeting with all of these stakeholders so we can discuss this further. Um, we've identified a model in Westchester Borough, and they've had a very successful program. Uh, they have a, a component where they do like a green business type award program for businesses that are working on this, so it's more of the carrot, less of the stick approach, and it's worked pretty well for them. So there's a lot more to come on that, but I just wanted to update you on that. Um, and then something that Sutan brought up last month, when we were doing the eligibility list for the police department, you had some questions about the police department hiring and sort of the, the process. So I had an idea, and I'll throw it out there, and you can tell the chief and I that we're nuts if you want to, but, uh, we thought about having a luncheon learn where you guys could come here, uh, we could talk about the police hiring process, your, your role in administering the police department, the contracts, sort of how your role plays into what the chief does, what I do. We can give you a tour. I know Sutan's done a ride-along, I heard all about that, but we can give you a tour of the police department, um, afterwards, but just kind of do a little more deeper dive into what the police department does, if that's something that you're interested in.
I think it's great.
Great.
Will you be able to make that, Sutan, in the middle of the day, or?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll make it.
Okay.
We can, yeah, we'll, we'll do a doodle pool and figure out a time that works for everybody, make sure Sutan can be there.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, that's a great idea.
Thanks for the idea.
Thank you.
I'm stealing that from Ferguson, they do that in Ferguson, so thank our friends there.
And COG, they have those luncheon learns.
Yes.
For new people, yeah, it's a great idea.
And just a couple more things, um, the signal work on Atherton Street, the, uh, signal that was replaced that was hit in 2021, the North Atherton Place signal, that should be completed. It's on its 30-day operational test, which I think ends this week, so that one should be good. Um, I'm trying to get an update on the coordination project that goes all the way from Patton Township out to 322 in Bolzberg, um, but they're still working on that. I know they were putting in the fiber optics, and so hopefully, uh, that'll be done here sooner rather than later. Um, we have in the capital improvement plan and in the budget to start working on an MS4 project that was identified through the pollution reduction plan many years ago. We have to get done by the end of next year. Uh, we met with Michelle, our new, um, consulting engineer, to sort of talk about this and how we're going to move forward. So you're going to probably see more, uh, information on this project coming, because we have to bank so many credits through the state, and I don't really think it's a good use of township money to buy credits off of projects in other, uh, townships, so I'd like to do something in the township, so we're going to try to make this project work. Um, and the Open Space Committee will be taking a tour, their fall tour, in September. Um, we also are meeting with the consultant, Katie Ambolsky, from Woods and Water, um, to sit down and try to get a schedule for deliverables for the conservation plan that she's writing, um, because we'd like to put a timetable together so that that gets it to you guys by the middle of next year, since we have to close that grant out by the end of next year. And the Gainer Drive Parklet, just one update, Susan Wheeler contacted and got a quote to put in the split rail fence that we had discussed at the last meeting, uh, that should be completed the beginning of September. And if with that, if I will answer any questions that you might have on my report or anything else.
Any questions? I'll look over this direction first.
How did the appreciation with the employee go?
It went very well. We got a lot of nice comments. Um, we made sure that we took care of our police officers who couldn't join us for the day, so we stocked them up with some food, some pizzas and some things, and had some very nice comments from everybody. So it was small, but I think hopefully next year it'll be a little bit bigger, and I think people, even that didn't go on the event, enjoyed having the day off.
And Amy, where, where was it?
We went to Cannibals.
Oh, yeah.
The amusement park.
Thank you, thank you for doing that, and.
Next, I'm, I'm gonna need you to bring back some funnel cake.
Do that, we can do that.
And a turkey leg.
I spent way too much money in the arcade trying to win things, so.
That's real health food.
Real health food.
Funnel cakes.
Thank you, Amy.
Mm-hmm. I have to say, I appreciated your, your description of the errant driver as being the result of the traffic, so it was very different.
Okay, now committee reports. If you want to have anything to add to the report.
Here, um, Dan does, and I'll go after Dan.
You, you have an outline of, of the Finance Committee meeting, which Larry graciously provides, uh, but I wanted to spend a little bit of time educating the, the board on the classification and compensation, uh, plan implementation. The outline shows you the staff-required four scenarios for implementation, and we, and the, we discussed all of those, uh, in the, the staff, original staff recommendation was to raise every employee whose salary was found to be below market up to market on January 1st, uh, so that all, there will no longer be any, quote, below-market salary employees at COG starting January 1st. That was going to run, uh, well, you, you say here 129,000, I was more, I thought it was more like 200 and something like that. It was, um, they were coming to offset by another 100,000. Oh, that's. So it's 270 minus 150. Right, so it's more, it's 270,000. The total cost was 270,000. And that would be boom, you know, added to the 2024 budget on top of any other increases in, which include an almost eight percent, uh, COLA merit raised on all salaried employees at COG. So you have to add those together, plus any other new expenditures, like the, uh, fire department wanting to hire four additional firefighters to be shared with COG, but that would cost another, it would cost COG another 200,000 plus.
Yeah.
Dollars. Plus, Parks and Recreation wanted to hire an additional four or five new employees on top of what they already have. So we, you know, you add all of that together, and now we're, we're, again, like last year, we're talking about an increase in municipal contributions close to 15, 16%, just like last year, which we didn't agree to, by the way. Last year, we sent it back to them and said, we can't accept that, and then we ended up with a municipal contribution increase of close to eight percent for 2023. So anyway, just to finish by, the report here, uh, the Finance Committee moved to, should recommend that the Executive Committee in general form accept the implementation scenario, implementation plan scenario number four, which is to spread the increases over two years, the increase in municipal contribution. In other words, get the below-market employees, uh, 50% of what was needed to get to, to market in 2024 budget and in 2025 budget, complete the process and give them this, this second 50% increase to get them fully up to market, uh, in two years. Now, there were two, uh, two municipalities that voted against that, um, but still, the majority's, that's, that's what's going to go to the executive, so just so you know, Elliot, when you have your exec committee meeting, that's.
Next week.
Finance committee will be asking you, uh, to approve.
And we're being asked to approve the one that was actually passed?
Yeah, that, that was Finance Committee recommendation.
Right.
The scenario number four, where the increases in the below-market salaries would be spread out over two years.
I just don't want to be surprised by some other thing being thrown in that hadn't been discussed.
Well, the, the exec committee can do whatever you want.
Well, I know, I, I, I want to, I want to do what we're supposed to do.
What you're supposed to do. Is to make a considered judgment on the recommendation.
No, but you, you, you made a good recommendation, and I'd like to see it followed.
Yeah.
That's the basic idea.
Well, that's, yeah. I'm, I'm asking you to support the Finance Committee's recommendation. Unless there are other members of the board who disagree.
Yeah, I mean, being part of the HR Committee, it's, I mean, the initial push, um, you know, for these increases definitely came from a, a good place, a very, like, a socially just, economically just place. And so that was never under consideration that this, those who are paid under market needs to come up. Um, the sticking point has always been like, how do we make that happen? And so, one, I'm appreciative that some scenarios have actually been outlined, because again, initially it seemed like it was either you do it all or you, you do nothing, and it felt like that put us as, you know, elected officials in a bind, um, sort of like Dan if you do, Dan if you don't, right? But, um, yeah, I guess I'm curious about the, the municipalities who voted against this, what their rationale was.
Okay, the two that voted against it were, were Half Moon and Harris. So Half Moon representative is Ron Savella. He voted.
They just didn't want any increase.
They, they didn't want any change. I don't believe that anybody, that anybody should get any more money. Yeah.
And that was reflected in the general form.
That's the way they voted in the general form. The second objection was Bud Graham is the representative from Harris, and his concern was that, uh, the most underpaid employees at the lower end of the wage scale should be granted their raises immediately. And I, I pointed out to him that scenario two does that. Scenario two is grants everybody who's below market with their pay raised immediately. But he, then he said, well, but he's, he's willing to phase in the increases for the rest of the employees. So he was asking staff to go back and try to sort out all these, of the undermarket people and try to find the ones that meet, would meet, well, his criteria. None of the rest of the Finance Committee agreed with that process, so that's why he voted against it.
Yeah, and, and so that's helpful to understand. Um, I think for the employees to under, to understand too, is that, again, we're, at least from what I'm understanding, is that we are supportive, most of us, of making sure we get them up to where they need to be, period. The issue has never been that, it's always been, again, how do we do that, and you can't divorce yourselves, these increases, from all the other things that we, we have to fund. And I think you putting in the perspective that it's not just, you know, the, the salary increases, but the fringe benefits that come along with it, the other positions that these units are wanting to hire, um, and how much, again, that, that stuff just becomes exponential then, and so, um, again, I'm just hopeful, as we go back to the HR Committee too, and really conveying in all these different meetings that, again, we care for the staff, and they're situated in a larger sort of like ecosystem that unfortunately is, is, is not, um, needs to be tended to, and again, that idea restraint, I keep bringing that word up. Again, I'm really hoping that as we move forward in all our different municipalities and in the COG, that we consider, again. and in the COG, that we consider, again, what's the most important things in our operations. And again, for me, I feel like that's the people. And so hopefully then, when we're thinking about the other capital improvement projects, for example, we can understand that some of that stuff need not be there. And it impacts, again, just the, the ability of our, our staff to actually thrive and be successful. So this, this feels, this doesn't feel, I still feel a little unsettled, knowing that we have to, like, have people wait for this to happen. But this feels better to me than, like, the initial scenario two, for example.
Now, I have a question and would like some guidance. Suppose this, this one's voted down next week at exec. And I'm gonna vote for it, but suppose again, what should, what should be the Plan B?
Plan B would be exec would come up with their own implementation.
Oh, that's what I worry about. All right.
You'll figure it out, Elliot. Somebody there will.
Okay.
Plan, Plan C would be, it's still gonna go through the, the budget process. So it'd come back after the budget process.
All right.
And a possible Plan B, Plan C might be, this happened years ago, we fought about the COG formula and trying to change that. It was punted off to the managers and the finance directors, and we met, Tom Kurtz was still, I think he was still the Patent Township Manager when that happened. But we met over a couple of weeks to kind of gain consensus and hash things out and get a plan. And that speaks to what Suton has been saying about making sure it's fiscally constrained, because we obviously know our own budget. So that might be the compromise plan if this plan doesn't move forward.
That was all after my time. But I'll keep that in mind, though. Betsy?
So I have a question for, for Dan, well, since we're talking about the Finance Committee. So my understanding, when we went through the program plan recently, that the people who had proposed various items within the program plan actually had rated those. And that, that was the proposers' sort of rank ordering.
Right.
So, um, I felt that then when it comes to the budget, um, that those, I just felt that we, we or the Finance Committee would return to those ranked orders. And so, um, I, I don't feel that it's an either/or, as in funding, um, the increase in the, the change of the title and the increase in the salary to match national averages. That would be the either, and the or would be all these other positions, because many of those other positions were, were labeled four, or three, or two. Whereas the raising to a certain national level was labeled one. So that's, am I?
Well, no, the, there was no rating of the classification and compensation. That was not part.
Right, it wasn't rated.
They only rated the new employee requests.
Okay, gotcha.
So yes, during the budget process, we will be looking at those ratings.
Right, okay.
And deciding, you know, can we, can we afford to fund just one of them, or two of them, or three of them? And certainly, the rating would tell us which new employee they would prefer.
Oh, I guess I was just trying to allay concerns that I think Suton had expressed.
Well, yeah.
I don't think it's an either/or. I think it's a either.
You know, the reality of the situation is, it's the same as at home. I have a, a, a budget in my house.
Yeah.
That, you know, am I, I can make the decision of, am I gonna buy steaks or ramen noodles and do something else? You know what I'm saying? The reality is, COG gets all their money from us, okay? We fund them. But if we have a substantial, substantial increase to COG, then we have to short ourselves someplace else, okay? So the reality is, yes, you're gonna have to make a choice, maybe even of giving them this raise and cutting back on Parks and Rec. On what we gave Parks and Rec. We don't increase their budget from last year, only actually decrease it. I mean, that, that's the reality of the situation. We have only a, a, a circumsized button.
So, so it is, so it is kind of like a, a and/or, and I think they're setting this up in that way. And so my, I, I under, and I understood that this wasn't part of the ranking, and, and I appreciate that they had rankings. And I guess the, I won't say frustrating part, for me, it feels like it would be helpful that, to not include some of those things just in the, in the plan. Because now it's up to other individuals to go line by line to sort of rule all that stuff out. But if they're going and thinking through, this stuff seems convoluted, then as they see something like this for the classification compensation and the numbers, it's just like, well, I don't want that, given that I'm, I'm having to sift through all these other things. And so I think to help their cause, again, for them to be able to actually whittle that stuff out and not rely on the elected officials to, you know, look through and tease out all these things, I think it would just do better, more justice for, like, prioritizing something like the classification compensation, as opposed to, yeah, again, if that makes any sense.
I think it's kind of a hybrid or compromise between what we had two years ago, which was no ceiling or no, um, what, what was the other thing?
Guideline.
No guideline, or whatever. We called it something else.
It was a cap.
We had no cap or guideline. And, and so therefore, every department is looking out for itself, as they should do. But this year, this past year, we put in that rating system in the program plan, which I think was ingenious, because of course, every department wants to put its needs or dreams forward, but they can do the prioritizing. What happened last year was led by our new manager here. The manager's getting, generally saying, no, it's gonna stop. So then it went back. But this way, I think we've got almost certain plan that, even the Finance Committee could say, based on your ratings.
If we were to give them everything that's in the program plan, Dan is right. It's gonna be in excess of what they asked for last year. It's gonna be higher than, than 16%.
They've self-rated.
Yeah, but they still put it on the program plan. Now they have to, when they do the budget.
Okay.
They have to decide what we're gonna move from the program plan into the budget. Because if they take everything that was in the program plan and put it in the budget, it's going to be in excess of 16%.
Right, of course. Okay.
So hopefully, they don't do that. Well, if they do pick a 16% increase, it reflects at our budget, because a tenth of our budget is COG.
But what, so here's a question. So procedurally, why couldn't the Finance Committee say, it's gonna put us way too high, we're gonna go to Parks and Rec, sorry, Parks and Rec, for example, and we're gonna eliminate this item that you've ranked only.
That's what we did last year.
That's what they did.
That's exactly what we did.
And that's what you're gonna do, that you.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
But we have to go line by line.
That's, that's what I mean, like, why can't they proactively do that?
We actually go line by line and say, okay, this item that you want, make it happen.
Great, thanks. Thanks for letting me work out that process. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Anything else on this?
Yeah. Are you finished, Dan? Dan, are you finished?
Yes.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I have public safety. I submitted my report to Amy, which she'll, she'll relay to the board later.
It's on at your places tonight.
Sorry, Amy. Well, good. What I do want to reiterate is the Code Red is on the COG website. And what Sean, who is now our fire director, congratulations to Sean Kaufman. What he has asked is, last week, when we had the tornado warning, to ask individuals who receive the warning on their phone. That tells us who has the app. If you ask your neighbor, did they get a warning? And they're like, yeah, my phone went off telling me about, you know, the tornado watch and warning. If they said no, then they don't have the app. We ask that you ask them to put that on their phone. They're gonna be doing educational pieces throughout our communities. Chief, I know Sean is gonna be meeting with you to have some kind of table at the safety fair to, to reiterate this information. Also, um, the Code Red is on the COG website. Once you have it on the website, go to a, to announcements and type in Code Red. It'll bring up the Code Red information that you should have on your phone. It also explains what, what Code Red is. And, um, what they're saying, it is a notification meant to communicate events of emergency on all your phones. So if you don't go to COG website, you can also go on your App Store on your phone and type in Code Red to download the Code Red app. So as we're moving forward and as the weather is changing on us, it's, it's, um, I guess is imperative to have this life-saving communications on your phone. You could be driving, you don't realize that we're in a thunderstorm, severe thunderstorm warning, or tornado watch, which went from a watch to a warning. So we just ask to stay, to be prepared as we move forward to get this information out into our communities. Thank you.
If there's a warning, don't be caught watching.
Yes, we'll have her push that out.
Yeah, great.
I didn't send it to report. Yeah, the HR Committee met, and we had voted to authorize the Executive Director to include some appropriations for the employee relations budget, as well as the employees wellness budget. And that's, that's what's important. That's what I got.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to jump back to a couple clues. So I happened to attend the Lucy Committee, even though I'm on the Climate Action Sustainability Committee, but I was explaining to Elliot, the, the Climate Committee, part of its charter is to keep tabs or receive reports from what other committees are doing, specifically Lucy and the Facilities Committee, which pertains a lot to the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. So I took it upon myself to go to the Lucy Committee, because I'd like to report back myself. And it was actually an exciting meeting. I was actually jealous that Lucy got to do it and not the Climate Action Committee, because they, they are working on two things involving electric vehicles. So one is coming up with a model ordinance, which we're all going to use, they'll come up with a model and then we'll adapt it for, obviously, our township. And at the same time, they had an intern who worked on an EV readiness guide, which kind of has two levels, one level aimed at homeowners and one level aimed at installers, so electricians or engineers who would be installing. And, and so I was very excited. So that's going on in Lucy. And they also, sort of a tech, they voted yes to refer the amended regional growth boundary and the sewer service area, which is, which we've all seen, and the other municipalities. That is going to the general forum at the end of the month. And very interesting, very new to me, Mark Bockel brought in the report of the census that came in. You know, somehow this escaped me, but there's a cohort, and these are essentially college kids, so it depends on the city or the jurisdiction that you're looking at, but basically, let's say maybe, maybe never, the 18 to 23-year-olds. That, all of a sudden, there's this drop in the population. There's speculation that it was because of COVID, there were sampling errors, do that. And, and Mark, in fact, then went out and compared college registration, say, state college, with those numbers there with the census numbers. And there's been that great discrepancy. So they're reported in college, but somehow the census missed them. So to all of us, this is gonna impact, what, our federal dollars? It's gonna possibly impact the drawing of political boundaries. And, oh, and then going forward, there's something called the American Community Survey, which is used on an annual basis, I guess, to make.
They estimate your population?
Estimates, thank you, yes. So all of those estimations, estimations are going to be skewed. So, um, so I asked about them doing, you know, some sort of a compensation or a correction factor, and there's consideration to do that. That's, that's what the US Census bear, not with us. Thought that was fascinating. So skipping now, you know, we're gonna have the Climate Action Committee, and we just met yesterday. Two exciting things. So we currently have a website called Center Sustains that was done by a, essentially a first-year college student, really a great local kid who skipped a year of college and put it together. And then we also have a website for solar application. So, you know, people get wind of those two, they go to both the websites. So we're actually combining both of those under one roof. Again, another intern who, you know, the first words out of his mouth, I'm thinking, he totally is a, you know, website nerd. I loved the presentation. Very interesting process, just FYI. Both the consultant, or I should say, the intern, who is this website, probably genius, and Pam, who doesn't know websites, but she knows climate. They didn't do, put anything on the computer, they just went with pencil and paper. And they worked separately. And they, they got one idea from the library, tech, computer guy, who recommended that they make what he calls viewer stories. So imagine people, who's gonna be going to the website? They came and put those viewer stories, and then the two of them made separate pencil and paper drafts and brought it together. Sorry for the rabbit hole there. But, um, oh, and a big thing that we did, which was a really, a very detailed thing, was review the comments from the consultant, who looked at the paperwork that we'll be going through when we either do an R and B, request for bid, or an R and P, request for proposal. So I won't take you down any of those rabbit holes, but there's a lot of them. And, but I will say one thing that the committee decided on, which sort of goes counter to the recommendation of the consultant. The consultant recommended that we eliminate the requirement that the trucks use compressed natural gas, or in our case, we have access to renewable natural gas, and allow the Gs diesel. And the reason, the reasoning behind that was it would allow some of the smaller carriers to have a chance to bid. The goal of any R and B or R and P that we put out, obviously, is to get quality services and a low price. Last time, we put this out, we only got one bid. It's hard to, it's hard to argue with that. But, but, but even with that one bid, we have very low prices per month, about $8 for the fixed service. So that's pretty remarkable. A lot of things are changing in the waste management business. It's been five years since we've done that. So Shelley Mato was rightfully concerned, and Ted Orinbach, what's his name?
Anybody?
Anybody, thank you. With the Recycle, Recycling Authority or the Waste Management Authority. With the recycle, recycling authority or the waste management authority, very concerned about all the details. So they're working out. But the committee, and actually other people in the room, really by consensus and then by vote, decided to stick with the requirement, to stay with the natural gas. And it was felt that one of the smaller companies would not bid anyway. There was, you never can tell, and we think that it's not legal to go out and ask them for their bid. But they probably don't have any interest in changing from diesel to CNG. However, across the area, across the state and across the area, many of the companies in waste hauling are changing their trucks from diesel to CNG. So they're a little bit ahead of the roof blowers, or the roof quarters, anyway. So that is my report. Exciting times. Yes.
Thank you for that, Betsy. Unrelated. So I know Amy and I had a conversation a few weeks ago, maybe last month. And I know something I had addressed was a desire for obviously more citizen engagement, but particularly, we had talked about students, undergrad, particularly grad students in our area, and making sure that, you know, they're aware of, you know, the township and that we, you know, can work for them. I know in my role at a local university, I guess, I've already encountered students, you know, this summer who were having, for example, housing related, you know, issues. And it, it was unfortunate because it's like their concerns, like they're looking to the university to remedy, you know, that these things happen in their locales, and there is no remedy for that. And so, again, as students are returning, again, and again, particularly our graduate students who many have families and stuff like that, I'm hopeful that we can, you know, again, find a way to, you know, get more, do more outreach to them, to let them know that we, we can work for them. And so I don't know if that's a handout that we mail to them and just listing, you know, a few things that we're able to actually assist with. Door knocking is probably not really a thing, but yeah, I'm just really hopeful that we can, you know, make sure we're advocating for the needs of our students who are living in Patton Township.
So we, what we might be able to do, we did this with the Clearview Avenue rezoning request, Sophie put together a postcard that we sent out to residents right around there. We had a QR code that you could scan and go on our website, and then a link you could also type in. I feel like the QR code would probably be pretty popular with students and grad students. So we probably could do a targeted mailing and create something on our website just for students where they would know to get more information. If they need our help, they need the help of the police, they need the help of the center region, you know, Code Office, the Alpha Fire Company, we could, we could certainly create that on our website and get something out.
Yeah, I think that'd be awesome. And I think just the mailers making sure, because I know I'm guilty of this, like, I'll see something, throw it away, but just making sure that, you know, in the design, it actually captures them and says like, this is actually for you as a student, and so don't throw this away and go here.
Yeah.
It's always, it's always been a tough thing, and I'm glad to go and do something about it.
I want to piggyback on that. I also talked to Amy about new residents into Patton to do a welcome packet, giving them the information, like the police department information, any information, public works. And other municipalities have done it. Any person that we know is moving into our township, they get a welcome packet, whether it's a postcard with all the information, welcoming them into our community, and it gives you an outline of everything that's going on. I know I have a new resident neighbor who just moved here, and we're going to be talking with them to let them know what Patton offers, especially for the public safety, he has kids. So I'm looking forward to working with Amy and Sophie and maybe Larry and any of our board members to come up with a welcome packet to Patton Township, a place for all. And, you know, pushing our model out a little bit further. And especially hearing that the students are getting back and just bridging the gap for other communities to know we're here.
Well, we don't get in for this semester, we should make sure that it is in for next.
Thank you.
Anything else? Is there any other? Go ahead.
I was just about to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's done. Right there.
Thank you.